Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this regularly scheduled Springersbury Township Board of Supervisors meeting. Our first item will be a pledge to the flag.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So there have been no executive sessions since our last meeting. So at this point, I would like to open up the Florida communication from citizens. And if there is an attendee on Zoom, if you click the raise hand button, we can recognize you and bring you into the meeting. Yes, sir. Name and address for the record, please.
Nate Hartlob of Drop Valley Road, thirty-two sixty-seven Drop Valley Road. Yesterday, I received a notice of violation for having chickens. On was basically more chickens that I was allowed and within two hundred feet of the property line. None of my property lines are, I can even get two hundred feet, about three quarters of an acre. So I would need to seek some type of appeal. And the appeal process is to submit five hundred dollars and go through a board or something like that. And that seems extremely excessive for some chickens. Now, we've had them for, you know, for, I guess this is the fifth year. And now all of a sudden, it's a problem. Lots of other people have chickens and lots of other people have animals close to property lines that are in the vicinity of me. And no, no action has been taken on them. Neighbors, all of our neighbors, none of them have complained. We actually share with them chicken, eggs, or even meat last year. Like I mentioned, across the street is zoned RR. They're still in violation of the two hundred feet. And nothing, nothing has happened either. I understand discretion can be given in this and I, and I hope it is, or maybe the policy be rewritten to something more appropriate because as it's written right now, I can have six chickens and two horses. Seems kind of crazy to have two horses. I do have a horse. And I can bring it there, but I think that's excessive. You know, it, to me, this policy needs to be written based on acreage and not necessarily zoneage. There's a farm right down the, like right down the hill from me. They have twenty-eight acres. They have all kinds of animals. And they're fine. The, the farm across the street is zoned RR. They can have more animals, but still be out of, in violation. So I'm not sure what to do here, other than maybe this just goes away and nothing else is more said. I understand, you know, you guys have obligations you're supposed to fulfill and kind of, you can look towards a blind eye on some things. You know, there's no safety issues. There is no local neighbors are not complaining in any way. So I'm not exactly sure of why it's now all of a sudden an issue. But we'd just like to know where to go next.
So to be honest with you, this is the first time I'm hearing of it. So I have no
I just received this yesterday. So it's probably, yes. I don't, to me, I can have two horses. That seems crazy.
Horses equals how many chickens?
Yeah, yeah, like, yeah. So I understand you guys like have to do something maybe. Or you just kind of ignore it and you actually have stuff that you need to do instead of worry about number of chickens and horses. So it becomes
So not everybody's in the same situation that you are and so it's sometimes a little bit hard to do a one size fits all. You know, have a whole bunch of chickens on a quarter acre lot in, in a smaller area and
But it's not, it's not written per acreage. It's not written per acreage. It's written for each zone. That, so per acreage wouldn't make
Zone is based on the type of, general type of use of that zone.
I could tell you there's a property right down the, like down the hill from me. I can see it. It's like twenty-eight acres.
That wouldn't be zoned the same as yours.
Yes, it is.
What, what's your zone?
R twenty.
R twenty, your R twenty.
Yeah, large, was that large?
Twenty-eight acre.
Yeah, it's, it's a Spring Hollow Road and Drop Valley. There's a farm down in the middle there. That's like twenty-some acres, but it's still zoned for R twenty large. So I just don't understand the I don't know.
Logic.
The, the logic, yeah.
Just out of curiosity, how many chickens do you keep?
Oh, we have twelve.
Well.
And, and maybe six chickens makes sense on a quarter acre, you know? I don't, I don't, I don't know, but
What was your address again?
Thirty-two sixty-seven Drop Valley. It's right on the corner.
I'm just curious, the, the process, did you get a
I, I received
Did you get a warning first or just?
I received the violation yesterday. Yes.
We would have issued it. No, no. And just because neighbors don't complain to somebody in person. A lot of times we get complaints and we respond to said complaints.
But yeah.
Because we don't, we don't typically go around looking for problems.
I, I asked Hyman if there was any complaints and he was just there in the empty lot, doing some other work with the neighbor. And saw that I had chickens. It was not a complaint. It was just, he was just doing his job. So. I mean, that doesn't it's a hundred and seventy by one forty, so, I mean.
R twenty allows it, but again, two horses and then more than six.
We had for, seemed like a whole year we were dealing with chickens in multiple different zones.
And that was as a result of complaints and neighbors of people having excessive amounts of chickens close to their property.
In denser residential
Zone, yeah.
And I have empty lots all around me. So. I'm just not sure what the next thing, maybe I don't hear anything and that would be great, but.
Well, just can't be, we haven't noticed about it.
Yeah. Okay.
So Charlie.
Or if you feel that.
Do I have to peel it for
So
the five hundred dollars? And that applies to everybody. Even, I mean, I'm residential property. I understand five hundred dollars might make sense on a commercial property. So I need an engineer show up to give me a waiver to say you, you're good for enough chickens? Just seems crazy. I, I know.
Don't appeal and don't come with complaints with what the regulations are. You can be taken to the magistrate and fined five hundred dollars per day.
This is something that we could take a look into a little bit further and see if there are more changes to the ordinance that makes sense and revisit this violation at that time. We did something similar with these in the, in the past.
Yeah, I mean, certainly.
And what's the timeline in your letter? When do you have to?
It says somewhere. You are hereby notified to remove said rubbish garbage within fifteen days. Received a notice. Please advise that you have the right to appeal township board within thirty days.
Rubbish being the manure from the chickens. What, it doesn't sound like, I mean, I didn't hear chickens in that. So is but that's not what your notice of violation says.
No. Well, it says about more than six, yes. And then also says within two hundred feet of, of any line, any lot line.
So if it's zoned for six chickens in R twenty, but can't be within two hundred feet of the lot line and the lot is smaller than two hundred feet. He can't have chickens. Yeah.
I think the two hundred feet was meant to, that you, if you were storing the newer or other of them, the storage. So I'm not, I'm not sure if you have a coop, a chicken coop that in south beans or stuff. The odor is one across something. I think it's sort of the number.
Highlighted here in yellow.
I'm trying to find it in the ordinance exactly and I'm not.
So does it have a Three twenty-five dash one twenty-five.
Three twenty-five dash one twenty-five. Could we at least grant him an extension of time to respond while we look into the matter? Is that something within our
That's what I was suggesting.
I can also tell you my neighbor Zach across the street, he got the same letter and he's in similar situations. So there's, there's a couple of people in the area there, Druck Valley and Mount Zion. At, at least, no, I know of one family right across the street from me, so.
Though in the R twenty district, you're not, not allowed to have no more than six poultry animals. So what, yeah, right. Areas used for grazing and exercise shall be securely fenced. Shall be housed in or erected, maintained for, on building for sheltering animals, buildings required. This is our this is RR and then R twenty is
R twenty expand.
Is all of this plus the limit on the poultry and limit on the horses. No ponds, pools, water, accumulation, storage of manure and other shall not be permitted within the two hundred feet. So it's, it's the count and it's the storage of the manure within two hundred feet of any lot line. So I guess as long as your odor-producing substances are off-site. You have six chickens, that's the salt, that's the solution, is the way I read it.
Sounds like you can't have a chicken coop to put the chickens in because that's considered a storage facility for manure.
Doesn't mean accumulation.
Accumulation of.
So I don't know what you're doing with chicken stock, but.
They accumulate.
Yeah. So I'm curious, Mr. Hartlob, you may not know the answer to this, but do you have a sense of how many residents here in the R twenty RR have?
I would say a handful in my area out there, Druck Valley and Mount Zion. It's not going to go away. I mean, so.
Eric, is there a network of all of you? Because, you know, if we would, as a board, undertake some sort of zoning changes, we'd try to take this all at once and be as comprehensive and consistent as we have with what our residents are actually experiencing. So it's more than just, as the chairman said, it's more than just your case.
Oh, yeah, yeah. It, to me, like, when I look at its zone for R twenty, that doesn't necessarily make sense because that doesn't quantify how many acreage you have and that really justifies how much animals you can have. So, I mean.
My understanding is it would be whatever the limiting factor is that would determine it. Is that correct? So it could be R twenty and you, and you could have however many chickens the limit is, but if you have a place that you're collecting and storing manure and you can't meet the requirements, then you can't have them at all. That would be the way I understand the ordinance.
That's the way I understand it too.
So.
Being a lot bigger than what the two hundred foot frontage.
More than just two hundred.
More than two hundred, yeah.
You gotta go into the middle of the lot, two hundred.
Two, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Have to be
Four hundred feet wide.
Four hundred feet wide.
Very narrow chicken coop.
At least.
Yeah.
And I'll run into the height restriction.
Yeah. Um, so this be a, a topic to, to take up with the comprehensive plan.
Absolutely.
To talk about zoning. And could we suspend this violation until we have some type of well, that's our decision, not, not the solicitor's decision. We could suspend it on the R twenty.
I would be, I would be very supportive of that myself.
I would be as well. If Mr. Hartlob, if you can spread the word, we are having a public meeting on our comprehensive plan. Where we're taking into consideration these issues on September twentieth.
Okay.
Next Wednesday.
Six, six P M.
Six P M here. So any and all of you that have thoughts about how we change zoning, maybe make it a little bit more flexible. I'd like to hear more than yourself, obviously, so if you can round up the, your
Maybe the people who haven't been cited yet don't show up.
But I'm telling you, I'm finding more chickens in denser areas too.
Yeah. So, and you gotta help us, you know, where do you draw the line?
Yeah.
Um, I mean, what makes sense, what, what could cause, I mean, maybe you have kind of a unique situation, but
Yeah, because I have empty, empty lots.
Spot zone every single piece of land to fit what each person wants to do or whatever else and have eight hundred different zoning titles.
Yeah.
So there has to be some rational way to do this and then some rational way to to come up with limits that don't cause problems for neighbors. I mean, you know, if you have thirty beehives on a quarter acre lot and you have neighbors complaining about it, that's an issue. Honeybees healthy for the, for the environment and the community? Yeah, absolutely they are, but where do you, where do you draw those lines? And so for us, it's a little difficult because we draw a line that we think is kind of a good compromise between a lot of different things. And then we miss some.
Okay.
So we'll if, if my fellow board members and Don, I don't know if, if you agree with this. Suspend the, the notice until we have some type of input from the public and some kind of outcome from the comprehensive plan.
I, I'm, I'm fine with the sentiment. I'm not sure we have the power to suspend anything, but that's okay.
If you need to clarify what exactly it is you're suspending.
The notice of violation.
Maybe enforcement of the notice.
Or enforcement of the notice of violation. I mean, you tell me what the, what the proper legal way to do this is and we'll vote on it.
Proper legal ways to not bring it up at all. But then I'm not a lawyer.
What, kind of the other notices of violation? Somebody else complains that notice of violation is that or they're filing, you know? I don't know if you're suspending. And I'm not sure what it is. Is that just the number of, of chickens? Because this section also talks about horses and not allowing them to horses, but he's not complaining about horses, but if you suspend that, then the whole thing goes down.
So we were talking specifically about chickens.
Right.
Well, there's
Number and footage. Yeah.
You can't have any based on the one provision of accumulation of
And also there is a provision and I, I kind of missed it. It just said a building required by A two, which suppose if they're not actually, if the chickens aren't exercising, they're totally powered. That has to be within two hundred feet. That can't be within two hundred feet of any lot.
So that, so this isn't a suggestion that, that Charlie Roush would be excited with, but I, I think that we should take no action and wait and see what our staff does with enforcement between now and our next meeting.
For yours?
It fits within the letter of the law.
George, you're awful quiet.
Oh.
I, I, I hear the argument. The problem for this gentleman though is that if we do that, it's going to cost him five hundred dollars.
Not if no
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily, right?
So what Donna is suggesting.
Staff and I just heard what Charles said, the ordinance says, why would I come to a different conclusion?
Hearing the will of the board, would the staff take any action at all?
I'm not sure that's a fair question to ask in a public meeting like this, but.
Well, you know, Paul, that was sort of the the way it turned out with
Right. I mean, that's exactly what I'm suggesting.
Well, is that a legal term? Can we hold this in abeyance? Any further action on this violation by action of or hold the, well, not enforce, but which is defer enforcement. Would you recommend that as a motion? Or would you recommend that as a consensus? Then we're trying to determine if we want to defer any action until the board has an opportunity to study the matter.
However, I do, what I would recommend is that if there are other notices of violation that have been sent. I think it's only fair maybe that those other people are given notice, but that, that notice of violation is not going to be banned.
How many notices of violations do we have on livestock presently? How about in the R twenty zone? Okay. It would be neat if you could have some data for us on that. I know it's short notice, but if we could have that next week for the public meeting, that would be helpful. So what I'm looking for is a list of the current zoning violations relative to livestock in the township. I, I wanted to see if we knew it now and then I tried to drill down to the R twenty zone, but if we could have it for next week's public meeting, that, that would work. So then there is this question between over the next six days. Are we going to get due notice out to all the other violators that the, this one is held in abeyance? To be fair, as our solicitor says, or do we want to put all of them on abeyance? The next six days until we have some discussion. Well, it's, it'll be more next. We're not going to walk out of that.
Yeah, you can't have a decision next week.
It's right.
It's not a
No, it's not.
Supervisors.
Right, which will be in two weeks.
Right, but you know, it would be, it would have to be a change to the zone.
Right. In theory, if, you know, we get consensus of the comp plan, we have enough material that the supervisors could act in two weeks. Worst, our best possible case is the board makes some sort of comprehensive decision then to go through the ordinance advertising and changing process.
I was just saying, is that really the complaint? I don't need the purpose of that meeting. They don't drill down that deeply.
That is correct.
I don't know if that's the form in which to number of these ordinances when it comes to these, you know, livestock. Some of them, it's based on density. There are formulas. That's, that, sometimes it's somebody's weight that so there's different ways to go after, or deal with the number of livestock that is committed in particular, of course.
Yeah.
This one, this happens to pick a number, but it's not the only way to do that measure. It may come out the same. I don't know. I mean, you know, I
Mm-hmm, yeah. Right, that's possible.
But to me, that makes more sense based on weight or however you want to quantify it, other than just a blanket. This, this R twenty section and this RR section, so.
As Charlie pointed out, the honeybee topic was months and months and months and months till it was settled. It wasn't settled in a couple of weeks.
Six days, no.
If we only had one violation. Randy, do you just estimate less than five, less than ten, less than twenty?
Violations. I'm going to say less than ten because I, I can't say for sure that it's not more than five.
I want to be careful too, because we're only talking about the R twenty district. I mean, they're not permitted in other residential zones, right?
That is correct. So I'm, I'm seeing in total, I believe that there's more than five violation currently out there. Exactly how many are in the R twenty? I can't tell you specifically until I look at the
Right, but that's the only ones we would be dealing with for the day.
Right, right, right.
It's just R twenty.
That's I'm good with that, yeah.
Then we would only have to notify the R twenty violators.
Correct.
Okay, that's even better.
Do we have to notify them or do we just take the action that we're not going to enforce?
Well, if, if they've been issued a notice of violation, they should receive notice that.
Right.
But that's, at this point, it's just being suspended.
And we do have other notices out. I know that for a fact. I just don't know specifically the zoning districts off the top of my head. How many are R twenty and how many of the other districts that aren't allowed any poultry?
I, I thought we were done with chickens.
We are not, Charlie.
We talk about unintended consequences all the time, don't we?
We do.
And just so that you're prepared as well, it could be that after we get through this whole process, it stays the way it is. And you would have to do something about chickens. But we're willing to entertain the idea that, that there should be some change.
Yeah. I mean, how it's written right now, I'm, can't have any technically technically, within the two hundred feet or something like that, so.
Yeah.
Good.
Yep, thank you.
I'll see you next week. Thank you.
Anyone else either in the audience here or on the Zoom meeting? Oh, Dan, is that Dan Hoff?
Yes.
All right, then moving on to engineering reports, environmental Diana.
Good evening, gentlemen. I have no updates or changes to the report that was submitted, so if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Anybody else? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, civil engineering report, John.
I don't really have. Uh, any, any significant updates. There is a payment request for Davies Drive. They continue to work out there. The Signal Company from the railroad is almost done. Once they get done, then. Uh, York Excavating can then, uh, complete the sidewalks and we have a couple of other. Uh, odds and ends out there, but it's going smoothly, so we'll be done probably. Yeah, three, four weeks, I would say for sure. Um, in addition, uh, the only other update. I, the next zoning here, and we have one case scheduled, and as the zoning hearing for October is that deadline? Uh, are we past the October deadline?
Yes.
Okay, so it, any, any additional zoning appeals refers to the notice of violation would go to November anyway, just so you know, so. That's all I have on my, if you have any questions on my report, I'd be glad to answer them.
Do you have any insight what's on the October docket there presenting?
Uh, it's a pool in a steep slope zone.
Something about needing to have drawings.
You talk about TASSA?
TASSA.
So we have that out.
Bid.
We have that out to bid right now on Penn Bid. I did get an email. Penn dot, when you get these grants, and the manager and I have talked about this, we're going to have a phone call. With them, when you get these grants, they have like a liaison. That, um, uh, facilitates, uh, the work. And I'll just tell you, when we initially started, they wanted the township to replace the pipes on their market street and. Uh, after a long fight, they realized we weren't touching those pipes and we weren't gonna, those pipes are more costly than the darn sidewalk project. Um, then on the shopping center site, there used to be a gas station there behind the, uh, the ice cream place at the far end. And they wanted a phase one and we, we did that and. Initially, they wrote to us this week and said, the phase one's not done and oh, it was in the wrong file, that's okay. Then we heard from them, uh, that. Uh, uh, we, we called Penn Dot to say, are we going to need a highway occupancy permit? And they told us yes. And we were told by our liaison, now we don't really need a high occupancy permit, but you do when you're working on the Penn Dot right away. And then finally, um. Uh, they said we have to acquire right away and back in the sixties. Penn Dot recognized that there was a pretty wide right of way, we're within it. The wall that's going to be built for this sidewalk project is outside of that. That was a mandate. We had to move some things around, but it worked out. So I think the right of way is cleared, but we are going to have a meeting probably someday next week to try to wrap these up. The, the project is out in a, uh, what they call a unit price bid. In Penn Dot format, but we, we may have to change some things around and we'll find that out next week, so. Um, we're, it's out and advertised, but we may have to pull that back. And as soon as we schedule our meeting with the Penn Dot liaison and the Penn Dot individual who the manager knows, we'll, we'll get some better direction on it.
Maybe it was a different grant that I was thinking of.
We have Green Lake Go, we have.
Try to find it here.
Arley.
Do a question about, um, was it R cap or rack P? It's written both ways in the, in the memo.
Rack P.
Rack P.
There was one that, uh, bidding had to be started by the 31st of August and it looked like the bid meeting was. That the.
Yes, that's the TASSA grant, yes.
Okay.
And, and the way the verbiage states in the grant application. Is it has to be ready for bid. Well, I took that to be, let's put it out to bid. We have all of our paperwork. And the liaison is coming back saying, well, not all the I's are dotted and T's crossed, so we're going to work that out this week.
But that's not an issue.
I don't know. We're, we're going to find out. I hope not. It's a, it's a, it's a nice grant. It's a needed project and we'll see what happens there. And we have a cooperative developer.
Yep. Any questions for John? Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Um, next we have our consent agenda items A through G. Is there anything that anyone would like to have removed for discussion?
I'll move to approve consent agenda items A through G. Second.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Nice to be able to hear Don.
Yeah.
You guys wouldn't believe how good you look now.
Likewise, Don, you look like you're in a studio.
Uh, bids, proposals, contracts and agreements. We have authorization to execute 2024 SPCA animal care and housing agreement and amount not to exceed nineteen thousand two hundred and sixty-six dollars.
Mr. Chairman, this is an annual contract. The current con, or the future contract, this contract for 2024 is a increase of fifty-five hundred dollars. Um, but the la, it is important to note that the last price increase was twenty-one, two thousand twenty-one. Um, so we went the last two years without an increase from SPCA. Um, and this service is used by the residents of the township.
Mark, I just have a curiosity question. I don't know if you know the answer, but. They provided a summary of services here and they haven't identified Springsbury Township. Is, is the procedure that's in place, is it good enough that it actually captures which municipality these pets are?
From my understanding, yes. I, I'm going to find, there's. I have a meeting there next Friday, not specifically on this, but in their services to York County as a whole next Friday. Um, but my understanding of past conversations is they capture that pretty well.
Mr. Chairman, I move to authorize township manager to execute the 2024 SPCA animal care and housing agreement.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Communication from supervisors. What do you have, anything?
I just wanted to once again compliment Randy on his presentation to the Rotary Club of New York East about the comprehensive plan effort. And all of the opportunities for the public to get engaged. So again, Randy, thank you very much for that fine presentation.
So I have gotten a, a request from, um, a couple of, um, of our. Uh, constituents about the bocce ball courts again. I know that we had an approval for a, um, an Eagle Scout project, probably about what, five years back or something like that? That fell through for whatever reason, and I don't know the reason. Um, we get occasional, um. Inquiries about bocce ball. So is that something that we can take a look at with Parks and Rec to see if. There's an interest and, and whether that's something that we can do?
Certainly.
Chairman, it's my understanding that Heritage Hills built some bocce ball courts and then they, a year or two later tore them out for lack of use. Nobody was using them, so I don't know.
Maybe a difference between paying for it and using it for free.
Very well be the case.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not suggesting a mandate that we have to build them. I'm just saying that.
Sure, look into it.
I, I get these questions periodically from. Various places. Anything else? Um, solicitors report, Charlie.
Uh, I do not have anything to report this evening.
Managers report.
Two items I wanted to mention. First is I want to extend my appreciation to. The directors and other township staff through the last two plus years of. Moving and the people that got displaced and the people that were. In small areas and all the different things.
I think their office is in a pretty crappy place.
Literally. Um.
Here, here.
I, I just, it, it's much appreciated of that and the extra work that. Others did to make this project because I didn't do it by myself, certainly didn't do it by myself. So I wanted to say that to everybody. And secondly, as a reminder, this weekend is our Fall Fest. So it's a two-day event Saturday. I believe the hours are 10 a.m. to 6 p.m. And Sunday, I believe is 10 a.m. to 4 p.m. here at Spring and Sperry Park, so. That is all.
We have fireworks?
No fireworks.
Mark, I did have a question on the AKR, AKRF matter that we did approve in the consent agenda and as you noted. What is the probability that we get reimbursement from the consortium?
There's a high probability that we'll get reimbursed from the consortium for the extra funds that we're going to pay. Um, what that dollar figure is, I don't know. When the consortium's not running out of money, there's plenty of money in the coffers, but. Most of it is earmarked for projects, so there is a pool of money that's not earmarked yet. But I would, I needed to wait on. To request, I needed to wait on this information that we just got from D E P.
Sure.
So.
Would this reduce the amount of projects that they have to do? Because this sounds like this is a pretty good.
Well, it's a guar, it's a slam dunk. It's a guar, it's a full guarantee.
This is a full guarantee and the other stuff that they have isn't.
Correct, but if they've all, and when I say they, I'm part of they, because I'm on, I'm on the management committee, but.
Contracts, then it's.
If we've already granted. That to set money to other municipalities, then we have to honor that. So there is a pool of money that's not. Earmarked for anything yet. It's sitting there. So it, the other thing to take into account is. The consortium's contract with A A R C, that's a different firm that does this type of work. Was $2.14 a pound. Our contract with AKRF was $2.73 a pound. So the consortium will not pay more than 214. So even if they have enough money for all of our pounds, it would add be it to $2.14 rate. So I'm, I'm working on that. I'm working on something else with the planning commission, so.
This still takes us through 2025 anyway, so.
It takes us through 2025 and beyond because the extra 238,000 pounds exceeds our current permit.
Through 2025.
Through 2025 and that work is a credit then. For the next permit.
The next.
The extra pounds that we received this time are.
Yep.
Removed or however you want to say that. So it's a good thing. It's just. It costs extra money, obviously, but now we don't have to do other projects either, so, which would have been more than. Six, $600,000, right?
And even at 214, it looks like we'll get back almost half a million.
Can I make one comment about the Chesapeake Bay effort? I, I get this magazine called, um. The Chesapeake Bay, uh, study and they had a really tiny article in the last issue. And in July, they had the smallest dead zone. Ever recorded in the Chesapeake Bay, which is good news. Dead zones are bad and, you know, but it, it was sort of buried in one of the articles and it's, uh, I think.
That doesn't help their cause.
I guess not, but I, I, when I read that, I was like, wow, good news. I'd have that on the front page telling people we're making improvements, but I guess. You're right, it's not the correct message, but I, there, the quali, water quality has greatly improved, uh, over time. With these efforts.
Mark, I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
You, I think it was today, you shared a response to a resident who. You clarified that he does have a top coat on his street in front of his home. I think in his email to you, he had cited a couple of reasons why he believed that wasn't the case. Uh, so I, after reading your response, I understand he does have a top coat, but I'm wondering. Do any of the things he talked about in there in terms of what his support was, do they merit repairs or are you comfortable with? What he's citing is okay as it is? I think it had something to do with storm drain.
Some of the storm drains on Pilgrim and Woodside are. The, the asphalt around has sunk, so the concrete inlet top sticks up a little more, so the water. Doesn't necessarily go in it unless it's rushing down the street. So those are valid points. And we take that into consideration when we say what streets need paved and not. But not necessarily would that jump it to the top of the list, but.
So that's not a repair of that around all that.
Something that could be repaired?
It can be repaired in lieu of paving the whole street, yes. So that's not going to be ignored and I probably should have.
That's what I was curious.
Me, mentioned that in my email to him, so we can look at those things and make spot repairs to make. The water flow better where it's supposed to go.
The fire is flow better too.
Snowplows as well.
Um, you had mentioned in here that you haven't heard anything. Uh, since you contacted your grant compliance specialist at Tetra Tech.
I contacted her after our last board meeting because Mr. Cox brought up. Uh, questioned something. Um, that we haven't had any movement. So I reached out to her and she replied to me that she has not heard anything from the Office of Budget. And she was going to reach back out to them to see, and then she would get back to me after she heard from them. I have not heard from her. But that email went out.
You said last time that you didn't necessarily have any concerns yet? Are you starting to have concerns?
No, because I've heard that the Office of Budget is the hu, they're getting these things done, but it's not the fastest thing. So I don't have any concerns. We won't get our money. It just may not be as quickly as we were hoping.
Okay, anything else?
No.
Old business, anything with, um, traffic calming? How's all that working?
Uh, speed humps in 10th and 11th and Whiteford are. Working well according to not hearing any negative information from the residents, only positive.
I'm here. For old business that we need to talk about. Okay, new business authorization to purchase CCTV. Okay, new business, authorization to purchase CCTV sewer inspection vehicle through Bor-Tec Industries Mechanicsburg, PA in an amount not to exceed three hundred and seventy thousand seven hundred and sixty-five dollars through Co-Stars Contract Number zero two five dash E two dash four nine seven.
Mr. Chairman, this is Danny's Toys, yes. This is a sewer fund expense. It is budgeted. The current equipment, I can't remember exactly how old it is, but it's 20 years old, 16 years old. So this is equipment that's used to televise the inside of our sewer pipes to know its condition, so we can then develop our lining plan, our lining project plan. We also use the same equipment to inspect storm sewers, which we do before we pave a roadway. We inspect the storm sewers on those roadways to know if we need to replace them or not ahead of time.
Taking a look at the rotted out pipes.
Yes. So, and if I didn't say, this is in the sewer fund budget for 2023.
I would think the quality of the pictures will get as far secured than what the 16-year-old equipment will provide.
Danny can answer that. I wasn't included in any of the demos, so I only assume.
Motion. Moved to authorize purchasing the CCTV sewer inspection vehicle through Bor-Tec Industries in an amount not to exceed three hundred and seventy thousand seven hundred and sixty-five dollars.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Acknowledged receipt of 2024 minimum municipal obligations for police pension, non-uniform pension and Teamsters pension in the amounts listed in B, C and D.
Mr. Chairman, this is an annual thing as well as I'm sure the board is aware of that. These numbers come from actuarial information, especially for the police, actuarial information we get from Conrad Segal.
These aren't actually due until the end of next year. It says 12/31/2024? Or is that 2023?
That's what the, for the year 2024.
So we didn't include them in our budget for 24, which we'll discuss here in the fall.
This is just acknowledging the receipt.
At this point, correct.
Mr. Chairman, I move to acknowledge receipt of the 2024 municipal minimum municipal obligations for the three different items, B, C and D on the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
And that brings us to the end. Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.